This is the City of Wapaka, third Tuesday of the month, city council meeting.
Welcome, everybody, to tonight's meetings. We actually have a public hearing that we're going to take care of first, and then we'll start the city council meeting when we finish the public hearing. So I'll call the public hearing to order. It is 6:01 PM. Welcome, everybody. We have a public hearing, and we had a public notice that was posted. And so I'll read that public notice, and then, Justin, if you want to just add anything to that public notice before we go to getting testimony in favor of and opposition to. This is an ordinance amending Chapter 11 of the Health and Sanitation. Notice is hereby given that the common council of the City of Wapaka will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, October 19, 2021, at 6:00 PM in the council chambers of City Hall to hear testimony on whether to change language in Chapter 11 of the municipal code as it specifically concerns garbage and refuse. The hearing will be for the purpose of giving an opportunity for any person interested, their attorneys or agents, to be heard. This meeting will be located in the City of Wapaka Council Chambers. Public input could be through the city's website at publicinput@citywapaka.org. And if you do plan on giving public input tonight, you'll give your name, address, as you step up to the podium, and you'll limit your time at the podium to three minutes or less. Okay, so in attendance tonight, all of our council members are in attendance. Alder Person's Peterson, Olson, Mayo, Martin Dykstra, Mayor Smith, Kealan Chestnut, Pachatski, Hagan, and Fair. That's my quiz for the night, yeah. And then we also have, our staff is here tonight with us, too. Justin, is there anything you want to add?
Well, we'll be doing the first of two readings for the ordinance in the actual meeting, but this is just a public hearing now, so.
Okay, that sounds good. And so the way the public, I'm assuming that some of you people are here for this public hearing tonight. The way it works is that you will be, and it doesn't matter who comes up first, but you'll be asked to give either testimony in favor of or in opposition to the proposed ordinance change. And then at that time, you would give your name and address, as I said. And just limit your time. This is not a time for you to ask questions, but just to give your voice on your opinion on this. So at this time, we'll take testimony in favor of the change in the ordinance. This would allow us to have a citywide garbage and recycling in the City of Wapaka. So anybody who would like to give testimony in favor of, please come up to the podium, give your name and address for the record. Any testimony in favor of?
I would like to, Mayor.
Absolutely.
I pay about $55 a month for my garbage and recycling, and this will save me quite a lot of money as far as, and it will also, I believe, kind of help out with recycling and perhaps even help out with people illegally dumping garbage. So I'm in favor of it.
Thanks. And that was Paul Hagan?
Yeah, yeah, last time I looked, yes.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that we have on the record our names, so. And you have?
I have one as well. This is from Jason Retzloff at 813 Seventh Street in Wapaka. He says, "I love the city. It's taking care of the garbage collection. I know not everyone is in favor of it, but I wanted to express my support for it. I think it makes sense for the vast majority of us."
All right, any other testimony in favor of? All right, at this time, then, we'll take testimony against the proposed change in the ordinance. If you'd like to speak, please step up to the podium and limit your time there to three minutes or less. Make sure you give your name and address to start with.
My name is Sue Thabob, and I live at 804 B Sun Ridge Court. I'm against it. I was here previously and requested, for a lot of us that have only been using the buy-bag at $3, I only had to spend $3 every month and a half with this. If this is put down our throats that we have to accept this, then that's a 21% increase to my monthly costly budget. So it's not in favor for me. I know it fits other people, but it doesn't fit me. And so I am against it. It is an undue increase for a number of us that have requested an opt-out. And why? I'm very disappointed in this city council that they didn't do an opt-out option for some of us, as was requested.
Thank you, Sue. Anybody else that would like to give testimony in opposition? Any other testimony in opposition?
My name's Ed Avery. I live at 1206 Roilton Street. I've lived here, my wife and I have lived here for over 50 years at that location. I am against this trash pickup. It has nothing to do with economics for me. It has a matter to do with choice. Right now, I have several different choices to get rid of my trash and recycling. I can burn my trash, probably, if I get a burning permit. I can take it to recycling downtown, or I can go with one or two of the trash pickup centers. Also, that gives me three days in which to take care of my trash and recycling, Friday, Saturday, and Monday. With this new mandate, I have one day to get it out on a particular day. As I said, this takes away my choice and basically puts a tax on me, whether I want it or not. If I'm out of town for two months in the winter, I was told I will still be given that bill along with my water bill, and that doesn't sit right with me either. So I guess because I only have three minutes, I was prepared to talk much longer and ask some questions, but I guess that is not going to be allowed here. But I just wanted to make my feelings known that it's not about the money for me. It's about the lack of choice now, and you're mandating a tax upon my wife and I, basically.
Thank you, Ed. Anybody else that would like to give testimony in opposition?
Hello, everyone. I'm Regina McBean. I live on North State Street. I've lived there for over 40 years. I am not opposed to having the garbage picked up anyway, people want to do it. What I am opposed to is the fact that you can't opt-out. There are people that go away for a long time. There are people that have businesses that pay quite a bit of money to have their garbage and their recycling every month. They take that from their home to their business, and now that's out. Now you have to pay even more. They'll be paying, I know a guy who said he's going to be paying $500 just to get rid of his garbage. You know, $160 for each resident, and then the $250 every month at his business. I just think that people should have the choice whether they want to do it or not. And I hope that you'll consider that. Thank you.
Okay, any other testimony in opposition?
Hi, my name is Brian Weaver. I live on South State Street, 416. I also would like to support the opt-out. I live in a single household. It costs me only about $3 every month and a half to two months for me to do garbage. And it also is going to require me to do more snow removal to require places for my garbage pickup. I have seen garbage and recycling knocked over due to snowplows, and I used to work second shift. So am I going to be required to pick that up when the snowplows come through on the snow, when it snows? So it's one of my things I worry about, and that's why I've always taken care of my own garbage. You know, $14 a month opposed to $3 almost every two months. I don't think that's fair for some of the single households. I'm all for what you guys are proposing, but I think you should allow the opt-out for people like me and Regina and other people. Thank you.
I apologize, sir. Can you state your name one more time?
Brian Weaver.
Thank you, Brian.
All right, any other testimony in opposition?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, may I?
Alan?
Alan Kealan, 701 South Main Street, Wapaka. I am supportive of a citywide garbage collection program. However, I am opposed to the current proposed ordinance because it does not have an opt-out provision. I believe that the imposition of this ordinance may hurt many of our constituents because many residents, as these people have said, in one- or two-person households do not generate enough garbage to justify the monthly charge they will see. They currently share garbage collection with a neighbor, or compost, or both, or visit the WRRCC and pay by the bag every two to four months. Because some of our citizens are on fixed incomes, and because of those reasons I just mentioned, they may experience a hardship, financial hardship, from the monthly charges they will see. There are also some technical issues with the ordinance as it is written. Paragraph 1108, Pren A, Pren 1, says that WRRCC is the only acceptable alternative place to take waste and recyclables. It totally ignores the Wapaka County Processing and Transfer Facility as an option. That should be an acceptable place to take the garbage and trash also. Paragraph 1108, Pren C, Pren 7, addresses the issue of bulky items. It defines what bulky items are, but it doesn't really address what to do with them. If they are left out outside of the recyclable container, for example, will they be picked up if it is window sets, which I recently had to dispose of, for example? I can currently dispose of my trash three days a week at the WRRCC. But the new ordinance allows me to do that only one day a week if I don't use it. I cannot put the trash out more than one day earlier for collection, and I must have the container brought in not later than one day after the collection. So if I choose to go on a four-day vacation around collection day, that means I have to wait for up to two weeks before I can legally place my garbage out for collection. For all of these reasons that I have mentioned, I am opposed to inflicting this ordinance on our citizens without an opt-out clause. If we can rewrite this ordinance to include an opt-out clause, and if we can also correct the few items, technical items I've mentioned, then I would support this ordinance. Thank you.
Thanks, Alan. Dmitri?
I also do not support the ordinance without an opt-out. I think it's great that we want to offer citywide garbage. I think it has a lot of positive things it can do for the community. But I don't think it has to be a situation where some people win and other people don't. I think that there's an opportunity for everyone to benefit by providing the opt-out. The people that are paying $55-plus a month currently are still going to save quite a bit more money, maybe $1 or $2 less a month that they'll save. But all in all, we're talking quite a bit of savings. So everyone can win. Plus, granted, there's going to be some administrative overhead to managing the opt-out process, but that's employment. I mean, that's a part-time job for someone, or added hours to someone's current workload that can provide income for a family or for a person. So I don't think that's a negative. For that reason, I wish that we would reconsider this and include an opt-out.
Okay, any other testimony? Any other testimony in opposition? Okay, so the way this works is that we will have discussion about the ordinance later on in the meeting. It is, it's under New Business, and it's the first item under New Business. So we're probably an hour into the meeting when we'll be discussing that item. So you're welcome to stay if you'd like to. It is on our Facebook page. It's also on our radio station and also on our TV if you'd like to watch it tonight. This is just the first reading of that, so council will not make a decision tonight. They will make a decision at the second reading, which will be the first meeting in November. And at that time, then, the decision will be made to approve this ordinance or not. Hopefully, all council members have heard what people have said tonight, and they take that into consideration when they decide how they want to vote. I did want to just make one comment, and I'm not just specifically picking you out, Mr. Avery, but I didn't want you to think that you don't have the opportunity to discuss this with people. The city council members, their email addresses and their phone numbers are on our website, as well as my phone number. My personal cellphone is available. I know that you have had discussion with our city administrator, Aaron Johnson, already on this, so I encourage any of you that would like to talk to any of the council members about this, that you take the opportunity to do that. Okay, anything else for the public hearing? All right, I'll declare this public hearing closed at 6:17 PM. All right, let's move on to the regular city council meeting. Today is Tuesday, October 19, 2021. It's 6:17 PM, and I will call this regular scheduled city council meeting to order. And as always, please rise and, as I say, the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, our nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. What are you going to do here? Oh, you're going to read that? Okay. All right, well, if you haven't noticed, we do have a blank chair up here tonight, so Sandy isn't unavailable tonight. Actually, she's homesick. So we are asking Aaron to double duty tonight here. So we're going to ask our city administrator, actually, to read the open meeting statement for us tonight.
All right, thanks, Mayor Smith. This meeting and all other meetings of the common council are open to the public. Proper notice has been posted and given to the media in accordance with Wisconsin state statutes, so the citizens may be aware of the time, place, and agenda of this meeting.
All right, and we could just go around the room here. Well, quick. So in attendance tonight, Alder Person's Fair, Hagan, Pachatski, Chestnut, Kealan, Mayor Brian Smith, Dykstra, Martin, Mayo, Olson, Peterson. I get better at it, don't I? And then we also have staff. Sandy is the only one that is not here tonight. We have city administrator Aaron Jensen, Kathy Kozar, finance director, Peg Burnington, our librarian, Jarrett Recu, our community development, Jarrett Smith, I should say, or Jarrett Jones, Tom Hart, our city attorney. I even practiced it. Justin Behrens, our director of public works, Andrew Whitman, Parks and Rec, and Chief Brian Ozell. And then Josh Warner is behind the curtains again tonight at this time. So you have an agenda in front of you. First of all, is the consent agenda. This is where we would take a motion on all of these items at one time. Unless you see an item on the consent agenda that you would like to be moved to the regular agenda, if that's the case, let me know right now, and we'll move that over to the regular agenda. If not, we would need a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Martin, second by Chestnut, that we approve the consent agenda as presented. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Against, motion carries. All right, the regular agenda. There are no additions to the regular agenda, so we would be looking for a motion to approve the regular agenda as.
Move to approve.
Motion by Fair.
Second.
Second by Chestnut, that we approve the regular agenda as printed. Oh, and don't forget, there was an addendum that was sent to you, too. I think it was sent on Friday, but it was on the website. So that's part of the motion. Mary and Lori, you're okay with that?
Yes.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried under non-agenda items and announcements. We have public input. Do we have anybody that would like to speak to us on a non-agenda item? If you would, please step up to the podium, give your name and address for the record, and limit your discussion to three minutes or less. Any public input? All right, let's go to community department head reports. And Kathy, you want to start?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor Smith. Good evening, council members. I have been working on the budget for the last month and finishing up some financial reports for the state on the several large grants that we have, so my office has been pretty busy.
Thank you. I just, I'm feeling good here, so I just found the script that Sandy did for me. I thought maybe I didn't get one tonight, so. No, I feel better.
You're doing well.
Next up is Peg, our librarian.
Yes, and I'm very pleased to announce that after being closed, our doors were closed for a couple of weeks because of our critically high transmission rate in cases in our area. On Monday, we did open back up. People can come in for an hour and use computers, use study rooms, spend time in the library, pick up their materials. So it's great to have that back open. As always, we will continue our curbside service for those people who feel that's the safest way or the easiest way to get their materials. We are in the budget process with our library board and our finance committee, and that continues. I hope that you'll stop in and see our new tall tables with a view. So in front of the library, we now have an area where you can sit and use computers of your own or our computers and actually look out the window. And it's a taller table, so it feels a little bit elevated, I would say. Personally, I'm working on documenting my work processes. I am looking at retirement in about four months, so we have time yet to do that documentation process and then also training staff. We will continue our outreach services to sunny day, and those will resume this week, and outdoor programming, weather permitting. Our meeting rooms and our in-person programming is still on hold until our cases get down to that lower level. And we're very excited to be participating with the other departments on the Main Street celebration next week. I'm going to be in costume, so you might look for the costume of the pig, and that will be me. The other thing is that we're writing a grant with Greg Gromen for digitizing our historic newspapers. This is something we've been working on for years, and we're really hoping that the Humanities Council will take up this project, and we can get some of this done so that we can make those history pieces available at your fingertips. History at Your Fingertips is actually the name of the grant program. And hopefully, we'll get that, and we'll know within a month or so. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Peg. Any questions or comments for Peg, or Kathy, for that matter, too? I kind of skipped right past that. All right, let's go to Jarrett.
Thank you, and good evening. So as of last week, I guess as of today, actually, the final email piece of the position was passed on to me. I have taken over all of the kind of tasks related to the zoning administrator. The contracted officials will still stay on for any needed advice or planning consultants, stuff like that, on a needed basis or as needed basis. We will be starting to see some zoning code changes, bringing a couple of those to the Plan Commission coming in November. Going to start small. I'm going to try to offer the opportunity for Plan Commission to come into my office, talk about any of the questions they may have ahead of time, or simply just shoot an email so I can have answers ready for their questions ahead of time to kind of make this zoning code amendment process a little easier, since there are going to be quite a few coming forward. Also with that, working on some new application forms. A lot of the residents that I've worked with so far have expressed concern about the difficulty with those forms, so staff has been trying to make those easier, not only to reduce staff time in helping them fill them out, but just assist them generally in helping them fill it out and having the correct information the first time. Going to Plan Commission, and there will also be an item on this today. Foundations for Living at 700 Industrial Drive will be looking for an approval to their change of use. They recently went through a rezone. And then there's also been interest, a site plan application and conditional use permit for personal storage units out by the airport have been submitted. So we will see those coming forward in the future.
Thanks, Jarrett. Any questions, comments for Jarrett? All right, let's go to Department of Public Works. Justin?
Thank you, Mayor. My update can be seen on page eight, nine of the packet. I had a couple of projects where we talked about focus on energy. The one, Alderman Hagan, actually suggested for our sludge pumps that we recently ordered. I have in there, it looked like we were eligible. We looked into it deeper. We're not eligible for, but we thought we were going to get some funding, but turns out we didn't. It was definitely worth the look. However, we did replace a number of exterior lights on our lift stations, swapped them out to LEDs, and we did get a, or we will be getting a focus incentive. That's about $600, so you win some, you lose some. In our wastewater plant, we are requiring the DNR to take steps to reduce mercury from getting in the environment. It's not naturally in, you know, waste, but there are sources, and our guys have to put in a lot of effort to try and reduce that at the source. I just would like to note that our third quarter sample of 2021 was our lowest result ever, and they have been putting a lot of work into that. So it's just duly noted to the wastewater staff of reducing that exposure to our environment. Streetside, Main Street, the work is going on. There has been quite a bit of activity as of late. The weather has been somewhat cooperating. However, we're going to be really pushing that November 1 deadline. We've been really hopeful the last few weeks, but our production has just been somewhat lacking. So I felt that I needed to put the word out, at least to this group here, that we're going to be pushing that. There's still a possibility we make that deadline, but there's also a possibility that work is continuing on past November 1. I would expect a majority of the concrete to be in by the time of our Halloween celebration. The streetlights are still a question mark. That shipping date keeps getting pushed back. Unfortunately, I mean, it's one of them things where the crews that are out there, I mean, normally, I think we would see more people. Concrete is not arriving on time. It's just inevitable. It's kind of, it's become one of them situations where we're going to be pushing that date, so. Our next road project, Hyatt Harrison, we did get an updated plan and an estimate. We are pushing that budget on that one as well. We have some time to refine that number, and obviously, we have a goal to set, and we're going to be working towards hitting that, keeping that within our budget. ATC, or American Transmission Company, is putting a bunch of underground fiber line through the city, and I just wanted to make it aware because they will be working quite a bit along Elm Street, Oak Street, Reed Field, Ware, Industrial Drive. So starting from Elm, kind of following the tracks, and then you can kind of see the natural progression to Ware Street, past Gusmer Enterprises, and over Industrial Drive. Just to put the, you know, the announcement out there, if you see those guys working, pull over and slow down, please. Waterside, we have five new customers, so that means five more occupancy permits were given by the building department, which is great. Hydrant painting is something that we had a program. We're trying to get all of our hydrants freshened up over the last five years. We have one more year left and about 100 left to do for next year. Water Department is getting a number of calls talking about garbage service. Even though that the garbage service is going on your water bill, the water utility, the water operators have nothing to do with that. If you have questions, please contact City Hall at 4411 or me directly at 4420. Facility side, Russ did the dead nuisance tree review for the city, sent out roughly 25, 30 letters. So those are out there, and he's working with those people to get those trees safely removed. Our new facility, the group met, our building group met to discuss the proposals we received for the construction management. We made a decision, we'll be bringing that back to the council floor. The plan is by November 6th, or 2nd, excuse me, to review those proposals with all of you and hopefully get a recommendation from you as well. That's pretty much it, Mayor.
Thanks, Justin. Any questions or comments?
Justin, are we going to be crossing into, with the Main Street construction, crossing into any penalty area? You said things might be delayed.
Yeah, so if they don't, yep, sorry for cutting you off. If they don't have it open by the end of the day, November 1, they incur a $1,000 penalty for each day. Obviously, it's, it's one of them things that's been well documented or will, throughout the project. We had a week off in the summer, which I hate to bring up, but we, we got to talk about it. That's been documented. So there's really no excuses at this point. You know, we go to these meetings, we have these updates, they give us a schedule, and it's gotten to the point now where it just seems unrealistic, and I thought people should know now.
So that may be implemented then, if they don't have it open? Because you're talking about things kind of out of control that we have or they have. I don't know if they're going to bring that up, or is it just ironclad?
Well, the only thing, I guess, that is beyond the contractor's control would be the delivery of the streetlights, the poles. Everything else has been in their control.
Okay. Anybody else? Any other questions? Andrew? Parks and Parks.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. Just a couple quick updates. I'll start with the Swan Park Playground and Splash Pad. As far as the fundraising efforts there, we're looking at being at about 85 to 90% completed with what we need for that. So I'm starting to work towards an RFP for the design and engineering of that, so you'll see more of that as it moves forward. So that's good news as far as the fundraising front, and you'll continue to hear about that for quite a while as we move forward with that. Riverside Park, if you remember, we're trying to work through and finish up a project that we started quite a while ago with some COVID and other stuff. It's been delayed a couple of times. If you remember, when we got all that rain, the water did do some damage along the banks, and that's part of what would be fixed or updated here in the next set of that. So working through, trying to get ahold of DNR and, and moving forward with that, so I'll keep people updated as we do that. If you remember, a couple of years ago, we did, we fixed a washout that ran through to keep the river in our park and a couple of other things. So just trying to make it a little nicer down there and fix up some of the damage from the high water and the river. Programs are going well. We have about one week left for flag football, ending with the infamous Swan Bowl, which might need to be changed because we're going to play that at Comet Field this year. So the kids that get to go to the Swan Bowl get to play on Comet Field under the lights. So that's, that should really be a special treat for them this year. So we've been working through how to make that work. Volleyball will be ending in a couple of weeks. Again, as a reminder, we've been doing that at the high school, at the high school team on Wednesdays, and that's actually worked out really well, too. I think the kids really look up to the, the girls on the varsity team and, and like the help that they're getting there. So next up would be intermediate and beginner basketball. And then just another note on that Halloween event that we do have coming up on October 29th. Hopefully everyone's able to make it. We've got a lot of different things going on, and I expect a lot of people to come downtown and check out our local businesses and some of the entertainment that they're having and just have a good time. Weather looks like it's supposed to be good at this point, so we'll cross our fingers that that continues. So come on down, October 29th, from 4 to 6 on Main Street.
All right. Thank you, Andrew. Any questions or comments? Go ahead, Paul.
Last time I was at Brainerd Bridge, I noticed there was a good amount of erosion on the islands there. Has that ever been looked into to be addressed?
It has been before my time, so I don't know exactly what has been looked at. I know that it's much more difficult, from what I've heard, as far as trying to keep those from eroning, erosing, eroding, sorry, I'll spit that out, than others. I don't know, Aaron, if you have any, if you've had any conversations on that. I know the water, the high water did some damage this time as well, so.
There, yeah, there has been conversations in the past with, I think, Scott Kinky from the DNR about permitting some riprap and things that you can do there to protect it. Maybe it's time to reengage in those conversations. I think we were applying for grants and we were unsuccessful at that time, and then it just kind of fell to the wayside. So that's about all my memory can recall.
I, I just don't want that particular park or project to be forgotten or looked, looked away from while we're looking at other ones, I guess.
Sure. And I'll, I'll reach out to Scott, but I'll also talk to, so we work through the group down by Wild Rose, Sean Sullivan, and a couple of their workers. So they would be the ones probably coming in and doing the work. So if I can get them to come over here and take a look at Riverside, I'll take them over there as well and see what their thoughts are on, and then it's just really a matter of getting through the permitting, and now that we have a grant writer who's very successful, maybe that would be an option as far as the DNR grant for applying next year as well. But you're right, that is a concern, and it's definitely, we don't want to lose those islands. It's an integral part of, of that, of that part.
So, thank you, I appreciate it.
Thanks, Paul. All right, anybody else? Chief Ozell?
Thanks, Mayor. My report can be found on page 15. We did have a speeding complaint over on Granite Street in the early morning hours, and the officers did a directed patrol in that area through September 23rd through October 9th. During that timeframe, the officers spent 26 hours running radar in that area. And during that timeframe, they wrote six citations and 13 warnings, and one of the citations was, "For speeding, the highest speed in that area was 49 miles per hour." We did put the speed board display sign up and in a report, if you can look in at, at that, you can see that the number of vehicles when they saw the speed board as to how much they slowed down. So I think that assisted along with our presences as to being there. We do have it now over on Evans Street. That's another area that we have problems with. So we're working on that one right now. Sighting news, I guess, for us is we made a conditional offer of employment to, to an individual. He passed his background check, so after that, we hope he's got his psychological that he has to pass. So if he passes that, we're looking at a December 1st hire date. And what is unique about this is this is the first time in a very, very, since I've been here since 94, that we're actually going to put somebody through the recruit school at Fox Valley Tech. He's a great individual, and they have to actually complete 720 hours of training through certification to become a police officer, and there's not a lot of people that know the training that's all involved in it. Some of the things are the cultural competence, ethics, crisis management, critical thinking and decision-making, the legal context, the tactical skills, the patrol, patrol procedures, investigations. They do physical fitness and officer wellness. And then once everything is done and they, they complete that, they actually have to go through field scenarios. So the Fox Valley Tech will put them in situations, and they have to pass those scenarios in order to become fully certified, as well as passing a firearms course and, and driving course. So there's, those are all different things that officers have to do when they go to recruit school. They either pass or they fail. We're not anticipating any problems. Like I said, we get a real good individual, I'll be starting. Another training that is going on right now is Officer Dan Wazerood is part of our SWAT team, but because of COVID, he was not able to attend any training. And a lot of us think that if you just, you know, people go to SWAT school, they're doing a lot of shooting. That is actually, it's incorrect. He has to spend 40 hours down at Fox Valley Tech, and they learn about the philosophy, the history, legal issues, room clearing. And they do the firearms training, the shield work, the less lethal. If they have to get a gas deployment, they do some rappelling, and they also do scenarios in team building. So this is another very intense class that, you know, that Dan has attended. On Thursday, we're going to, some of the departments can be going through some training with the True Narc Handheld Narcotics Analyzer. That was the one that Greg assisted us with writing a grant for, and then we received some private donations. There's only a few of these actually in the state of Wisconsin that departments have because this is a, a new tool and it's, it's pretty expensive. But what it does is you can have some suspected controlled substances or drugs, and you hold that scanner up to the drugs without us physically opening the bag and taking samples, and that's going to tell us what that drug is, and it'll actually give us a computer printout as to what we would get like from the crime lab, and we can submit, submit that to the district attorney's office. And like I said, it's a lot safer for the officers with the fentanyl and car fentanyl and all the different dangerous drugs that are out there. And kind of piggyback, piggybacking on that, this Saturday, October 23rd, between the hours of 10 and 2, we're doing the prescription drug takeback day. So all people have to do is just come to the department. There's no questions asked. They walk in, they can empty their, their pill bottles right into a box and walk out. If they want to put them in baggies ahead of time, all they have to do is, is drop them in. There's no questions that are asked. Last fall, when we did this, we took in approximately 48 pounds in the fall, and that's usually a little bit less than what we take in the spring. Usually in the spring, it's around 60 pounds. So I'm hoping that we can do more than what we did last fall because it just, it's a great way, and it's a great impact that we can prevent new abusers if those drugs are out of the house. And then going, I guess, going a little bit back to a little bit of schools, Wes Zuby facilitated a critical incident stress debriefing on a recent suicide we had. We had sent Wes to school for handling debriefings. If there's something that's bad that happens, Wes is able to go in and he's able to talk about the incident, they're able to debrief about, debrief about it. There's not a lot of departments in our area that have somebody like that. Wes is also on the officer wellness program for our region, for the state of Wisconsin. If there's somebody that's in crisis, that they can reach out to him 24 hours a day, that they're able to get ahold of him. So he was able to do that for our department. So that was nice to be able to have Wes do that because that affected seven different members between our department and the sheriff's department, as well as Gold Cross was, was contacted. And then the last thing that I have is Halloween's coming up. We always celebrate that on October 31st on Halloween from 5 to 7 o'clock. We'll have officers out driving around. We'll have officers up at Holly's assisting up there with handing out some glow sticks. So everybody just be safe and enjoy your Halloween. That's all that I have.
All right. Thank you, Chief. Any questions, comments? Colin, go ahead.
Excuse me. I enjoyed the, the data that you provided about the traffic.
Yep.
And I thought that was really useful. Then later, I, I noticed in Kathy's report that the cost for that software, there was a check written to that organization for around 2,700 or something. I don't know the exact number. Is it a one-time cost, or is that every time you put it out?
No, that's a, that's for the software. That's, I think that was a two-year cost on that. So for us to have that, for the software that provides all the data and everything we get, that's our cost, and that comes out of our operating budget.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
All right. Anybody else? All right, let's go to IT, Josh.
Been spending a bit of time getting equipment configured and ready to go for Main Street. We've got wireless access points, cameras, the speaker system. There's going to be some stuff with decorative lighting, and all that stuff hooks into a computer network. So I'm getting what's here configured and ready to go with the goal that once the poles are here and it's mounted and there's electric and data hookup, everything just hopefully works at that point and it's set to go. Have replaced a couple of computers in the past week, upgrading some digital, upgrading some computers with digital signage and some security camera systems. With the little tiny bit of extra time I end up having, which isn't much, I've been playing around with Windows 11, giving that a try. That's the new operating system for Microsoft that came out earlier this month. And as we get new computers, that's what's going to be on it. So getting a feel for that, doing some compatibility testing and seeing if there's any pitfalls with that before it ends up slowly getting out to other places within our organization. On the community media side of things, I'm working with Winchester Academy to help them with their fall series, which is kind of virtual slash hybrid. We do it in this room and we get it out on TV, radio, and the internet. And then continuing the Main Street updates with Justin, and hopefully those are done pretty quick. But those have been pretty well received. And then on the Wapakka Online side of things, myself, Ralph, and some of the staff have participated in a couple of meetings recently. New North received a grant to do a broadband internet study across all the counties they serve, and that includes Wapakka County. So we sat in on a kickoff meeting for that project for Wapakka County. So the firm that was hired is going to be doing a study in this county, identifying where internet coverage is good, where it's lacking, and they're going to suggest a plan, maybe try to suggest some funding sources. And I'm told that plan, or the report for this county should be here by the end of the year, so interested to see what that turns up. And then we met with a representative from Wapakka County and the company building the towers, kind of an early meeting, just getting kind of on the same page for that project. They're anticipating, I think it's pretty optimistic, but they're anticipating having the towers up by the end of November. That seems pretty quick. I know I've seen a couple of the sites that are more in this part of the country, they've been doing some work, you know, getting some gravel in for a kind of an entrance road. We heard from someone else, they heard, I've seen Foundation getting poured, so it's moving along and depending upon what the weather is like once the rep, that will dictate how quick or how slow my staff's able to work on getting equipment on those and moving forward on that part. That's kind of the main highlights at this point for me.
Thanks, Josh. Questions? Comments? All right, let's go to Aaron.
Thanks, Mayor Smith. I just had a few updates I wanted to touch on. Number one is, Justin referred to the news we got this afternoon about the real possibility that we may be pushing that November 1st date and, and beyond. So Mayor Smith and I talked this afternoon about the ribbon cutting aspect of that event on the 29th. That was going to be the first 15, 20 minutes. We are going to suggest moving that. I don't have, we don't have a hard date yet. We're going to continue everything else with the event. It's still going to be a celebration, but if we're going to do a ribbon cutting and some, some formal speeches, we may as well have trees planted, all the concrete done, the, the lights up, so on and so forth. So I will be in touch on that. Next, River North, the River North subdivision and the request for proposals. Staff and the development review team is really encouraged. We did receive four different proposals, and we are bringing in three different development firms for interviews. One on, I think two of them on October 20, one on October Uh, one on, I think two of them on October twenty, uh, one on October twenty-eighth and the other one, or other two on November fourth. So, we very much look forward to sitting down, meeting with them. We have some questions that we sent them ahead of time, uh, to give us some idea on what they're thinking, how the financing could look on their end, how much they're looking at building out, what type of housing. The proposals had a lot of that, but it'll, that conversation will help us a lot. So, we're, we're really looking forward to seeing where that can take us. Um, and then, I do want to also, um, this is just an anecdotal. As a new city resident, I want to, to provide some context. Justin, uh, mentioned the dead tree nuisance review, uh, that our Public Works does. And sometimes that can actually be, seem like a pain. And as a one-month resident, I got one and I have to take down my tree and it cost me some money and I'm like, you've gotta be kidding me. But I'll tell you what, that tree, um, in the last windstorm, there was a big branch that knocked down, landed, I'm not kidding you, a couple of feet from my neighbor's car. And that's exactly, I went by it and I said, that is exactly why we do that. So, if anyone has, um, questions on that, I'm a great example as to, to the benefits. So is my neighbor. Um, and then lastly, workforce. I sent counsel, um, that is a long reading, Alan, I saw you read it. Um, forty-one pages, uh, on workforce and the labor shortage and what we're dealing with. I just want everyone to know, I'm gonna be kind of shifting some of my priorities over the next couple of months to, to talk about how do we address that as an organization, that concept? Um, how do we position ourselves to be that preferred workplace, which is right in our strategic plan? Um, and I won't be doing it alone. I'll be asking for the assistance of our department heads and so on and so forth. So, Mayor Smith, that's all I have and I'd love to answer any questions if you have any.
All right. Any questions?
Aaron, just so you know, I also, a few years ago, got a tree ordered and had to cut a tree down. They don't play favorites with anybody on city staff.
Not at all. No, that's good.
All right, uh, we were supposed to have one other, uh, person from the community, but I don't see him here tonight. So, I guess we'll just go on, uh, to unfinished business, uh, under, yeah.
Do we have to do anything with Sandy's report? I know she's got something related to this, uh, redistricting, if we have to say it again for her or not.
Uh, uh, thank you, Colin, but that is gonna happen under unfinished business.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry to bother you.
That's all right. I need people checking up on me, so it's okay. All right, under unfinished business, uh, we have ordinance number fifteen dash twenty-twenty-one. This is an ordinance amending chapter seventeen of the City of Wapaka zoning ordinance. And if you remember, this is the second reading. So, uh, the, we would be looking for, uh, a vote on this tonight. Uh, so Jared, do you want to add anything or Aaron, you want to add anything to this?
Uh, the only thing, Mayor Smith, is I know there was some discussion who last time during the first reading about the sixteen square feet and potentially moving it to, to six. And then, we talked nine, um, when Alderman Martin stated the, the rider situation with real estate signs. I then stated that I might bring back something that's amended. I didn't. I checked with, uh, Attorney Hart and it was more appropriate, uh, as Mayor originally said, to bring it back in its current and then it could be revised right now with the final vote. So, it, it is as you saw it a couple of weeks ago. That's, that's the only thing that I kinda wanted to go over.
So, okay.
Otherwise, I, I did not receive any input on any of the items. And I guess I can really quickly summarize those again. Uh, the two residential ground signs, um, the awning signs and the canopy signs. We referred to Main Street Marketplace, um, as an example of that. It's going to a hundred square feet maximum. And then, the hanging signs, um, and creating a category to allow for hanging signs. That's a summary of this ordinance.
Good. Any questions or comments or a motion? Wait, hold on a second. Are there any questions, comments or a motion?
I have a question, just for clarification, as this goes up to a vote and the staff is requesting that, that six be amended to a different number or?
Yeah, I, yes. Um, I think either the six or the nine, uh, would be fine. If I would have changed it, it would have been nine in regards to the conversation that was had a couple of weeks ago to allow for that rider. Um, that's the only suggestion that staff would have.
But right now, it states sixteen. And so, there was discussion about maybe that was too large? And so, then, the, then we had the discussion about the six or the nine. And that's where we let off, right there. Do you have, is there?
No, I, I just was asking if there was a recommendation from staff about that size or if it was just?
I think actually there was a recommendation from all the personnel, Martin, right? But it, that it would be three or nine?
Well, either six, i- if we were gonna allow the two signs to be, um, to share one stand because you're gonna need, uh, six just for a standard real estate sign. But if there's riders, sometimes there's two riders, um, that, that would take another probably, um, three square feet or something. So, I think that's where Aaron was thinking, let's just make it nine. And then, we could have perhaps maybe two real estate signs, which maybe on a corner lot wouldn't be a bad thing, depending on the situation of the lot. So, I'd, I'd like to make a motion if I can, that, that we, um, approve the ordinance with it amended to allow for nine square feet on the residential sign and that the sign height limit should be extended to six feet to accommodate, uh, standard colonial post, uh, real estate, um, post.
Okay. And this is just on the residential side? Everything else would stay the same?
Correct.
Second? Yeah, so we have a motion by Martin and a second by Keeland that we approve, uh, ordinance number fifteen dash twenty-twenty-one, uh, with the two changes that were suggested. Uh, for the residential, it would be a maximum of nine square feet and the, no higher than six feet high. Any discussion? Paul, go ahead.
Uh, my question is, and perhaps I missed this, but what was the reasoning behind the sixteen foot? Uh, was there different classes of signs beside real estate signs that we were looking to allow? Um, I guess that's my question.
Yeah, there, there was talk of the, so it, it, this gets rid of the temporary sign. And then, the thought was when Jeff, our zoning administrator at the time drafted it, he was talking about allowing sixteen square feet for real estate-related signs. And the discussion went into more of a, most of those are on commercial properties, not residential districts. Uh, and then, I think Dimitri kind of spoke to, to why maybe the nine square feet makes more sense to address that.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay. Aaron, your first official task is clerk.
Oh, oh.
Here we go. Aaron will call the roll. Let's see. Aaron will call the roll.
Colin Dijkstra?
Uh, aye, approve.
Lori Chestnut?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Alan Keeland?
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Paul Mio?
Aye.
Dimitri Martin?
Aye.
Mary Fair?
Aye.
And Eric Olson?
Aye.
All right, ten ayes, zero nays. Uh, motion passes.
All right, uh, next up, we have ordinance number sixteen dash twenty-twenty-one. And this is an ordinance amending section point one zero seven of the municipal code of the City of Wapaka regarding aldermatic, uh, districts. And this is, uh, redistrict, redistricting that's done every ten years. Uh, so, this is the second reading of that. Um, I don't know if anybody has any questions or comments. I think Sandy explained it pretty well on, there were some minor changes. I think it was, uh, what in Alder, Laurie's district and Scott's? Yeah, and Paul's. Okay. So, there were more than just minors, redistricting. And, and the, and Conner on the other side, of course. All right, uh, again, unless you have any questions or you got comments from constituents, we would be looking for a, a motion to approve this.
Vote to approve.
Second.
Motion by Olson, second by Mayo, that we approve, uh, ordinance number sixteen dash twenty-twenty-one. Any discussion? Uh, Aaron will call the roll.
Colin Dijkstra?
Approve.
Aye.
Lori Chestnut?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Alan Keeland?
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Paul Mio?
Aye.
Dimitri Martin?
Aye.
Mary Fair?
Aye.
And Eric Olson?
Aye.
Ten ayes, zero nays. Motion carried.
All right, next up, uh, this is new business now. And, uh, this is ordinance, uh, number seventeen dash twenty-twenty-one. And this has to do with the citywide recycling and ref- refuse services. Uh, this would be amending chapter eleven of the health and san- sanitation. And again, as I said, this is the first reading and, and as we've done in the past, uh, Justin, if you want to just, uh, explain, uh, what this, what these changes do?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So, the ordinance starts on page one-ten of the packet. Uh, this is for our new program, move, uh, starting in January one, uh, regard, exactly what the public hearing was all about, uh, moving to a sole collection contractor, uh, which you had voted on in a previous meeting to go with Gration. Um, the ordinance, you know, I realize it's been reviewed. There are some questions on that. Uh, that first paragraph, um, I believe, Alan, you came in and picked up a draft. There was a slight change on this first paragraph. So, the third sentence says, "Only the collection contractor shall be authorized to remove accepted recyclables or waste within the city limits. Except property owners within the city may personally remove such items solely from their own properties, provided the waste recycled is delivered to the Wapaka Regional Recycling and Compost Center." Um, there was a slight wording change in that long sentence, uh, meaning that the trash in recycling that would be accepted by Gration would only, would, should only go into those carts. If they don't go in those carts, then they should be brought to the recycling center here in town. If that's trash recycling that's not accepted under this program, then that doesn't fall underneath this paragraph and they should be able to handle that waste, whatever it is, uh, per state statutes or proper ways of disposing of that. So, that was the intent of that first, very first paragraph.
I still think.
Are we in discussion or should I keep going, Mayor?
Yeah, well, I, why don't you keep going?
Okay.
Alan will let you comment.
Uh, number two, all of the properties, uh, basically spells out commercial properties, businesses, multifamily are not, um, are not within this program. So, those are the first two, the, the ones that are in, the ones that are out. Utilization, again, uh, calling out, "All standard units within the city shall utilize this service." Uh, number two, a non-standard u- unit, uh, does not have to utilize this, uh, which is later defined. Um, they can jump in or opt in with written requests to the city. Uh, service, number three, uh, service to standard and non-standard residential shall not be provided. Uh, when a unit requests water and sewer service permanent shut-off, unit is vacant and watering meter removed. Uh, so, meaning you can call and shut off your water. If you do that for at least twelve months, that's a permanent shut-off. If you call to shut off your water and then have it turned back on before that twelve months, you will get charged extra on your water utility bill. That is, um, a PSC, Public Service Commission, uh, the, the state entity that handles, uh, public utilities, that is part of that standard. Uh, so, if a unit is vacant, nobody lives there, whether it's decrepit or just nobody's there, we wouldn't charge for this. Uh, we would, if the house is being built, nobody lives there, you don't get the service, you don't get the charge until you get granted occupancy by the building department. C is definitions, uh, they're fairly straightforward. Cart, recyclables, refuse, a standard unit, which kind of just went over a little bit, a multifamily unit, uh, defined solid waste, a bulky item, which I think was another one. Uh, so, a bulky item is something larger, uh, a couch, a fridge, mini fridge, uh, something that wouldn't just normally fit in there, uh, would not be picked up by Gration underneath this program. But that doesn't mean you can't get rid of it. You have other options. You can call them, they do a bulky item pickup. That's a fee outside of this program. Uh, PTF accepts many of these items and you're still allowed to do that. Number eight, a non-standard unit, um, any dwelling, you know, that we've already gone over, multifamily, uh, is, whether it's zoned, commercial or not, is not in here. Uh, so generally, that's three, multifamily of, of greater than three units in one property would not be underneath this program. Then, we move on to general collection rules. So, we have to have, uh, rules on these carts and we have to have them taken care of. Can only be brought out to the street. Uh, so, the, the carts will be provided by Gration. And once they're provided, then they're, they're part of that, um, their own, they're still owned by Gration, so the people who have them need to take care of them. Uh, if you don't take care of them, then you could have an extra charge for replacing them. Normal wear and tear, they will get replaced, um, just naturally. Uh, other containers or carts are prohibited. Uh, we want to have a uniform program. We want to make sure that what we had in our proposal is accurate as far as how large these containers are, what they're accepting as far as waste. Uh, that all adds up in the program. Uh, we were given a, a fee based on the rules and kind of these regulations that we are providing. Cart placement, uh, this is a fairly important one. Uh, like most people who already have them should know, this is, is pretty standard. Uh, put it between the sidewalk and the curb line. If you don't have that, then you just put it just adjacent to the pavement of the roadway. We don't want these things on or in the actual roadway or an alley, um, because it starts cluttering up the road, could be an obstruction. Um, they need to be spaced out, so you can't have them tight to each other. They need to be a few feet apart from each other. Number four, collection schedule. So, we've been over this before. Uh, garbage will be once a week, recyclables will be every other week. Uh, the actual day that they will be collected or a schedule, that is to be provided yet, uh, in that we will provide that to this, to the residents, to everyone here, uh, before January first, uh, of each year. There's a holiday schedule that they put out. Obviously, if Christmas is on a Wednesday, your garbage won't be picked up on a Wednesday. Most likely, it's gonna be the day before, the day after. But we will post that, uh, as provided by Gration. The placement and removal of the carts, uh, again, we don't want these out there all the time. So, you have your cart, it's expected that they're near your house. You fill them up, you roll them out there the day before they're picked up and you bring them back, um, by the next day by six PM. E, cart rules, uh, kinda touched on this, but ownership of carts. So, they remain the property of the collection contractor. Uh, they are not the owner, they do not become property of the owner or the occupant or the residential unit. The carts shall remain with the residential unit regardless of changes in ownership. So, if you move out of town or across town, you don't take your cans with you. Just leave them there for the next people. Care and replacement, uh, again, uh, owners and occupants of that unit are responsible for the proper usage and care of carts. Carts shall be kept in a clean, neat and sanitary condition at all times and the lid shall be kept shut except during depositing of materials, removal of such items by the collection contractor. Owners and occupants shall be responsible at their expense for the replacement of carts that are stolen or lost. Replacements, carts shall be determined by the City of Wapaka and its collection contractor. Carts broken due to normal wear and tear will be fixed without charge to the resident by the collection contractor. Number three, cart exchange. Uh, you may exchange a cart for another available size determined. Number three, cart exchange, you may exchange a cart for another available size determined by the collection contractor, provided the cart to be traded in is good condition and the owner or occupant pays the exchange fee as determined by the City of Wapaka and the collection contractor. So there, we're asking, we're going to drop all these carts off, let's try this program out for a while, if you want a different size cart, you can request that through Gration, but we want to try and roll with it and just see how it works. Additional carts, which is number four, is similar vein, if you need more carts, you would call Gration and just work that out with them, we would not put that through additional on our bill. That is just so that, this program we have, like I said, defined by that RFP, is one cart of each garbage recycling, that's the dollar amount, that's the program, anything above and beyond that, whether it's an additional cart or bulky item, you square it away with, with Gration on your own, so you're not impacting the rest of the popul- or people in the city. F, solid waste and recycling rules, must fit in the cart, you only accept the recycling materials, you know, that are allowed, we will provide educational materials, it's a little vague in here, I admit, but the recyclables changes from year to year, we used to be able to recycle, you know, numbers like one, two, and three, or whatever, of your plastic jugs, well, now it's a bigger, lot more numbers, plastic bags are not yet there, maybe that'll change, so basically, what that is, is if, if it's an accepted recyclable material, which I think many of us already know what those are, they will take them. Number two, materials prohibited from other than the applicable residential unit, no person shall transport or convey into the city any solid waste originated in any other political unit for the purpose of depositing same in any cart or collection, regardless of whether such person has permission from the owner or person in charge of such property card. In addition, no one may place any items in cart except the refuse or recycle generated by the property or the owners or occupants of the residential unit to which the cart has been signed. So that is, we don't want, we don't want any dumping, we don't want any people bringing stuff in from outside. Again, whatever is generated here, we have a, we will have a contracation, Gration to get rid of what is generated here, we're not going to be picking up our friends from the adjacent towns, or further outside. Scavenging, basically, you can't be going in other person's dumpster for any reason, sanitation, that's a, that could be an issue. Drainage of liquids, again, if, if there is something draining out of the cart, that's an issue, for many reasons. G, violations, we always have to have enforcement in here, so we reference back to our typical municipal code twenty-five oh-four, so if you're caught violating, separating recyclables and non-recyclables, you're not using your cart right, you're scavenging, you can read failure to remove waste, removal of solid waste, or any other violation, we have the ability to enforce that. H is actually a section from the old chapter eleven, just disposal of hazardous waste and oil prohibited, we need to, we need to get rid of that stuff properly. And then finally, I, which is the cost, so number one, the cost for collection shall be established annually by the city council as a special charge, we've taken steps to do that already. Number two, failure to pay any special charge by the date indicated in the billings shall incur a late payment of one and a half percent. The late payment charge shall be applied to the total unpaid balance for the refuse and recycling services, that mirrors what we already do with our water and sewer bill. Three, failure to pay any special charge or late payment charge during a calendar year shall result in the special charge being placed on the property tax roll, so if you just refuse to pay your bill, again, that's another thing, just like the sewer and water utilities, you don't pay your bills, it can be placed on your tax roll as a, as a special charge. Number four, some legal wording that pursuant to Wisconsin statute sixty-six oh-six-two-seven, the special charge is hereby established for refuse and recycle collection, the special charge shall be established from time to time by action of the common council, all special charges for refuse and recycle collection shall be payable in monthly installments and shall be due at the time of payment. Any residential unit for which service is provided and for which a building permit is issued shall pay a special charge at the time of the issuance of the occupancy permit, said charge shall be in the sum of one-twelfth of the annual service charge commencing the month after which the occupancy permit is issued or required, and for the remaining months of that year, and shall be collected as provided herein. Basically stating, it's going to be a monthly charge on your sewer and water bill, if you move into the city and you occupy, occupy, excuse me, a building, you'll be charged for the month you moved in, not for the full year. Number five, the common council shall set the amount of the charge per residential unit annually by resolution in prior class one newspaper notice of the intent to adopt such resolution, establishing such amount, except that in any year in which such a resolution is not adopted, the levy shall be the same as the most recent levy for each residential unit. All receipt from the special charge shall be deposited into a special revenue, non-lapsing fund entitled Garbage Recycling Collection. So, before the new year, I will have a resolution adopting next year's charges, which was somewhere in the ballpark, excuse me, of thirteen, fourteen dollars, I don't remember the exact number off the top of my head, that will be adopted, and if we don't do that every single year, it'll just stay the same. And then finally, the last one is, we're going to create a new revenue fund, which Kathy has mentioned before, which will help administer the billing from City Hall and the other parts of the program.
All right, that was a brief description of what the ordinance says. All right, again, let me, let me make sure that we understand, this is the first reading of, of this ordinance, so obviously, we can have discussion here tonight, we will have discussion at the next meeting also, but there, there will be an opportunity to vote on this at the next meeting. All right, so Alan, I know you had some questions, so I'll let you go first here.
Thank you. I, I did want to note also that there was a public input against this ordinance from a Tammy Larson, and I don't know if everyone read that or not, but she was quite opposed to it. You know, before this comes back for a second reading, I would like to see it amended to include an opt-out provision. I think you heard at the hearing tonight, there were quite a few citizens opposed to it, those who wanted to show up, plus the, the public input. To be forced into this, I think, is just not right, and I think it will create a hardship for some of our citizens, as I mentioned before. Also, there are some technical issues that have to be taken care of, you know, automobile batteries are recyclable, but they're also hazardous waste, and so that's why I think specific mention of the Wapaka County processing and transfer facility is needed in this ordinance I can make a motion tonight, or I can make a motion at the next meeting, but the motion will be to have an opt-in provision, opt-out provision in this ordinance. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else have any comments?
I'll counter Alan's comment by saying, there was also one or two people that wrote in saying we should go with the, leave the opt-out and people out as such, and he, one gave a really extensive financial reason for it, I don't remember all the numbers, and the name was Mirding, Don Mirding, but I don't remember all the numbers, but very impressive written article.
Okay.
And, I'm not quite done, but it's...
Go ahead, Dave.
And the other thing I would have is, I know there's, I really want to put the opt-out in here, but the numbers, I'm not sure verify it, or why, and we have a little more explanation as why opt-out is such a pain? I guess maybe that's my question, why is it such a pain to those that, if we put it in, it's causing all sorts of grief to, particularly Gration, I know they had that, but maybe even the staff here is, I think Dimitri tried to answer that somewhat, but is there any further comment on that from anybody?
My sense, my sense is that, that the cost increases for those who continue to take the citywide garbage pickup with an opt-out clause, I don't think it increases that significantly to warrant excluding it completely.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I mean, I just to...
Yeah, go ahead, Dimitri.
Put a number on that, i- if we, if we move to change also the selection of the vendor, the additional cost in year one for having an opt-out would go from, with Harders anyway, it would be thirteen twenty-five to fourteen twenty-five, so an added dollar cost. For someone who's saving thirty-five dollars, they're going to save thirty-four dollars. They're still saving, you know, and the people that don't want to participate aren't hindered.
Okay. Paul?
Scott was...
Oh, Scott, I'm sorry.
I was just going to say, our staff, this is just a general comment, our staff works very hard to try to make life as easy as we can for our citizens, and I want it to be known that our staff in the city does not go out and try to shove anything down anybody's throat, they're, they're trying to make life better, and, and it doesn't always please everyone, but I guess we're, we're looking at a point where maybe pleasing more people than less, you know, there's, there's more that would help than, than it would not, and I just applaud these guys for trying to enhance our, our living situation, that it's kind of fallen by the wayside here, we, we kind of look at the dollars and cents, but what we're doing is, we're, we're trying to make our city better.
Okay. Thanks, Scott. Other council, Aaron, I know you wanted to make some comments, or...
Mayor.
I'm sorry, Paul, go ahead.
I was in line.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you wanted Scott to speak for you, I'm sorry.
No, well, first of all, I would echo Scott's remarks, thinking they're, they're, they're quite thoughtful. One thing that, that, that I did remember when the garbage haulers were talking is that one of them, and I don't remember which one it was, that said that Clintonville had, had a lot of problems and difficulties with their garbage collection with an opt-out provision, and I don't think that we really need to reinvent the wor- the wheel if they have been saying that they have problems and really don't like theirs with an opt-out provision. So, that's all I'm saying.
Okay, we all, Laurie, sorry, you guys got to raise your hands higher or something.
That was Harders who said that, and, and Clintonville has been using the program there, and an opt-out is just like a nightmare to, to people. Well, if you look at anything, doing this billing, how are you going to tell, you know, that's just, yeah, I see just, it's, it's a difficult situation. So, you know, it's, I think keeping our city looking nicely and maintaining the roads a little better, some of the stuff that's coming forward from this is, is way beneficial.
Thanks, Laurie. Dimitri, let me let, you've spoke once, and I'll let you speak again, but let me see if, if anybody that hasn't spoken would like to say something.
I have one clarification I'd like to make, based on a comment from Dimitri.
Yeah, go.
So the, the opt-out that was quoted from Harders, they had a buck a year in the first year. They had written in there, though, they would not deliver or remove any of the totes, they expected our street staff to do that, the rest of them included that of delivering or taking away all the carts, and those ranged in year one, anywhere from three fifty, there was four thirty-five, and then six dollars.
More.
More.
If you had the opt-out.
Yes, so just to clarify that, the, the effort to, to complete that.
Excuse me, I have a question of Justin then, if you can just clarify that, it was three fifty for what, three, three, three dollars and fifty cents, did you...
That was, okay, so that was from Waste Management, three fifty on top of...
Three dollars and fifty cents.
Three dollars fifty cents on top of, on top of what they proposed to include an opt-out.
Okay, okay. Uh, okay.
Want to say something else?
I do. I, I think that if, for, of some people to save ten dollars or twelve dollars a month is nothing, people can absorb that, but for other people to save that amount of money, it really is a savings to them, and it really means a lot, and we don't know who's who, but we do know that our responsibility is to take care of, do what's best for the whole city, not just for some of our people. So I think if it's a, if there's a savings for some people, and we get good service, I think we have to do it, and I think it's the right thing to do, so I'm all in favor of it.
Okay. Any other council member that hasn't had the opportunity to speak yet? Dimitri, go ahead.
I'd just like to counter the argument that it's this huge complicated thing for a garbage company to not collect from every household, I mean, that's, that's the current situation right now, we've got three garbage companies, they're used to only servicing some households and managing a list of who they serve and who they don't, I'm sure they use sophisticated mapping software that, you know, shows their drivers exactly which homes to pick up at, which ones not to.
Yeah, sorry, I was just thinking, they, they use real, they look at the dumpsters, and if they're, they're dumpsters, they pick them up, sorry.
Well, whatever, I mean, it's not that complicated, really.
Right, I get what you're saying, though.
But I don't think we're worried about the complication for the hauler, we're worried about the complication for the billing, to stop billing, then start billing when they opt in, and then, no, now I'm going to opt out, and, well, maybe, maybe I'll opt back in in August, and that's, I think, the confusion and the complication, I think, is what adds so much more time and billing nightmares to an opt-out program, if I'm understanding it correctly.
Good, Aaron, go ahead.
So I, I'm going to get to that in one second, I want to clarify one other thing, public input, there was some mention of other public input that were sent to the public input email, just so you guys know for consistency, since we started going virtual, I've only been reading the ones, we had a qualifier in there that says you have to put your name, have to put your address, so we know where you're from, we've been reading those and not the other ones, so, just so you know why some are read and some aren't, but you did receive all the others, so take that under consideration. To, to the question that was asked from Dave and Mary, just for some clarification, and yeah, I, I can't speak to how it impacts the garbage haulers, I know they said it may be a pain or may not be a pain, but from our standpoint, you know, every, every extra thing we do, we're put on our current staff, is another responsibility. Now, that's not saying it couldn't be absorbed, but the reality is, is we're always looking to improve things, we're always looking to put new programs in place in different areas, and some of those responsibilities, or all of them, fall on one staff or another. Now, there is an administrative fee, you know, tied to that, and we can recoup some of those costs, but we don't want to have those current things that we do, our current priorities pushed to the back burner, and maybe some report is late in the future because of these extra things that happen. Now, could we incur that for a year and be completely fine? Yeah, but is it possible that as we continue to make these decisions and put more on, that it results in a, a part-time person in a future budget? It's possible. So, those are the types of considerations that every time, yeah, it seems like we're fine adding a little bit here, and a little bit there, and a little bit there, eventually it may result in a, a request like that, that is then spread over the entire tax base, so that's a little bit on that.
Anybody else?
With regard to the, the savings that accrue to people, even the highest bidder, the price with an opt-out clause was still cheaper than the average cost that the residents are paying now, if I remember correctly, so there's going to be monetary savings for the citizens who stay with the program, and I... With regard to the savings that accrue to people, even the highest bidder, the price with an opt-out clause was still cheaper than the average cost that the residents are paying now, if I remember correctly. So, there's going to be monetary savings for the citizens who stay with the program, and I, to your point, I guess, I think there's going to be savings, it just may not be as much, but there will be savings, and so I think that's why an opt-out clause is still necessary.
Colin, go ahead.
At this point, I had three questions. The first was maybe for Attorney Hart and Justin. The last meeting we had, we approved and we said, hey, we want to do whatever you guys had proposed, I don't know how to say it technically, but to my mind, we entered into a contract with somebody already. Is that correct? Are we in a contract with somebody as a city?
My understanding is we did approve a selection of haulers.
We approved the selection, the contract has not been signed yet.
Okay. So, now to back out of that, is that saying that we're discussing changing that contract here? That's what I'm getting, but we're really talking about an ordinance, I think. So, anyway, that was point number one. My second question was, is there any thought to address within an ordinance or something else, a complete, what I'll call, waste hauler failure, which would be, they stopped coming, and what we would do as a city if that happened? And then my third question is really kind of small, but within our room tax board meetings, we've learned a new term called a tourist rooming house, which is basically a home that's used for rentals weekly or whatnot, and if there has to be a special, this is particularly related to the ordinance, if we have to have a special category to consider that particular property, type of property in this ordinance. So, those are my, I don't know how to address the hauler failure except to everybody, but those are my questions.
Well, let Tom piggyback if he wants, but the hauler failure is, the agreement is, they pick up the garbage, and when they don't, they breach the contract.
He took the words out of my mouth.
The reason I ask the question, if I may go on, in my home, near my hometown, they're having a problem where somebody is failing at picking up the garbage, and people don't have service for multiple weeks. So, what is a resident to do if that happens? If there's no other option, I guess, that's kind of, we've got a garbage here that's sort of there and not there.
Well-
Of course, they're the same people right now, I think.
I guess you're talking worst-case scenario, if they don't hold up their end of the deal, well, then we get our attorneys involved and we go after them legally, I suppose, I mean, I hate to think of that, but that's what would happen.
Well, and I think that's not really a question for Justin, but it's-
Not really particularly.
But it can be a-
Right.
Yeah, okay, right.
If it happens, it'll be a question for all of us, I would think, in the future.
Well, no matter what. Yeah. But I, yeah, I get it. Scott, go-
I had one more thought here, just, this is going to be like, become a city service, and we already have city services we provide, I mean, we provide lead pickup, it has a cost, they don't get billed a month, every month, but it's built into their tax bill somehow through our budget. And you might say, the library is a city service, I mean, it's, you've got to kind of look at it that way a little bit, too, if you want to see a different perspective. All services have fees, this is still being billed differently than maybe the ones we provide to otherwise. Just a thought.
Well, you know, what I'm hearing from almost everybody, there are a few people that didn't, but what I'm hearing from all the council members and most of the residents are, they like the idea of citywide garbage service, there's just this discussion about opt-out. So, your comments, I mean, I-
Yeah, I get it.
People are going to get billed, you know, for this, but it comes down to, do we opt out or not opt out?
Yeah.
And what's the best way of handling that? I can say to you this, we have a contract, we have an agreement, and so I would say that whatever we agree to in this ordinance, although we don't like to change ordinances, but if we find out that this creates a huge hardship, more than what we thought it was going to, if we agreed to not do the opt-out, I'm just saying, if it creates a huge, we'll be back here again, and we'll have that discussion. As someone's already said, what we're tasked with doing in the city of Opaque is doing what we think is right for the citizens of Opaque, you know, and does that include 100% of those people? Well, I wish it did, but, you know, in our community, when we get, you know, most of the time when we vote on things, we come to a consensus that's, that's close to, you know, everybody in some kind of agreement of that, but it doesn't always happen. But when we can get seventy-five to eighty percent, ninety percent, that's a pretty good vote. That means that it's a vote of confidence, and usually that's a pretty darn good representation of what our constituents are thinking and voting also. So, keep that in mind as you, as you think through the process. And I think somebody that brought up the, you know, and I'm struggling too, quite honestly, because I know there are people that are just not benefiting from this service, but I think in the, when you look at the whole picture, you really have to look at the whole picture of how it affects everybody in the whole community, and that's where I still am, believe that not allowing the opt-out is, is the best way to go. Can I, could I change my mind? I probably won't even have to vote, quite honestly, but if I, I haven't been convinced yet, so that's my take on this. That's the first reading, we'll have a second reading and a vote on that at our next meeting.
Mayor, I did just have one other thing, if I may, please.
Absolutely.
Okay. In regard to the cart placement, you can call me being picky, but it does say between the sidewalk and the street, normally, don't those have to go right up against the street for the mechanical arm to pick up? Or, I know that is the way with Waste Management, but the way this reads, at least I think, it could go like, right next to the sidewalk on the street side. So, I'm just, you know, I'm just saying.
Well, I, so, I think people are going to find out where they need to put it. First of all, their garbage recycling won't get picked up, but I think what I got out of this, I got the opposite out of this, don't put it in the street.
Well, no, yeah.
Yeah. You know?
That's obvious, but-
Yeah. Unless you want to see a snowplow push a garbage can down the street, keep it away from the road as far as you can.
So, just to clarify, if you have a sidewalk curb, let's say some people it's three feet, some people it's 10 feet, you're just saying, clarify it to get it closer to the road than closer to the sidewalk?
That's all I'm saying.
Okay.
Make an announcement.
Wow.
Last thing.
Hold on, let Dave, I saw Dave's answer, so let me do him first, Colin. Plus, he's older than you.
The other comment that's rolling through my head, and it was referenced already, I think Justin came up with the figure, was it from the survey, Justin, it was 90% straight and 10% wanted the opt-out, or something, did that affect?
Eighty-nine to eleven.
Eighty-nine to eleven. That's what's rolling through my head, they want the opt-out, but 90% don't, and so you're, you want the opt-out, you're hurting 90% of them, you know, look at it that way.
Go ahead, you can, if that's all right with the mayor.
That's when my vote comes down, I got to decide between those.
Go ahead.
The 11% wasn't opt-out, it was 11% would not recycle, would not use this service.
So, 89% of the people still want garbage service, is what you're saying, what you're thinking, but it doesn't have anything to do with the opt-out?
Correct. They would-
I love surveys, you know I do, you guys, I just love them. All right, Colin, go ahead.
My last point, we seem to be concerned about people who are going to be undergoing hardship if they're paying more than what they're paying now, and it crossed my mind just now that for my tenants, who I have, they can find a way to apply for a program for their water, or their heat, or their electricity, to get grants or help for those things.
Look at Kathy when you say that.
Is there any sort of program that could be available to people who are having a hardship, paying for their utilities, including this garbage, that if this is a hardship for them, we could do some sort of help, like cap services or whoever does to help people who are struggling with their utilities? Does the question make sense? Do you understand where I'm going to?
It does, the, it depends on the grant that they're going under and how they qualify, but right now, if it's on the utility bill, the cap services CV grant that we have pays the full bill, so if his, the garbage collection's on that bill, it's paying the bill-
Garbage as well.
And that's why it's considered a utility bill.
Okay.
Okay.
I just thought if there was a way to address a hardship with some sort of other funding, that might be a way to get out of our conundrum here. Okay, well done.
Okay, anybody else? I'm good. Stay all night? No Packer game? No Brewer game? All right, let's move on then. Under, we have another, we have a request here for an application for a temporary Class B retailer's license from the Friends of Opaque Parks, and this is for their black and white wine tasting gala at the Opaque Senior Center on November 12th, 2021. Andrew, you want to tell us about that a little?
Sure. Try to make this one half as long as that last conversation.
Thank you.
So, this is in conjunction, the Friends of Opaque Parks in conjunction with the Senior Center as a fundraiser, essentially, it's just that, a fundraiser, and there'll be music, there'll be dancing, there'll be raffle baskets to bid on, and, you know, formal attire, all that good stuff, and they will just get to sample some wines as they go around and take a look at the baskets, and then they can purchase wine from there as well, so that's the gist of it, unless anybody has any questions.
All right, any questions?
Move to approve.
Motion by Mayo, second by Chestnut, that we approve of the request to have a wine tasting at the Senior Center on, sorry, I'm losing my spot here, November 12th, from 5:30 PM to 7:30 PM.
Correct.
Any discussion?
Question, yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
I was at the meeting with Andy, Andrew this morning, with the Senior Center, and it says formal attire, but it doesn't have to be black and white tuxedos or anything, just dress nicely, and for everybody's information, it's 5:30 to 7:30 are the hours, and the $10 would cover your costs for tastings.
Yep.
That just updates what the information was.
All right. Thanks, Dave. Any other discussion? Ready to vote? All in favor, or signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Again, say no? Motion carried. Let's go to resolution number 1494, 2021. This is requesting Congress enact a revenue-neutral fee on carbon in fossil fuels, and you can remember Dr. Sutton.
Slutten.
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 Slutten. I have a hard time with last names. Slutten. So, he was at the last meeting, he, we did a resolution like this in 2016, and they're asking, or he's asking that we do this, and we've updated that resolution, and so that's the request under number C, so we'd be looking for a motion to approve, if you're okay with that.
Move to approve.
Motion by Farah, second by Kealan, that we approve resolution 1494. Any discussion?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
I'm going to take the opposition on this one, for two reasons, I guess, I think that fossil fuels is, alternatives, there's nothing close that can make up for the fossil fuel in quantity and even come close in the price. Secondly, this fee or tax they're going to put on the producers is going to be passed on to the consumer, and I understand there would be something in it so every family could get X amount of dollars. Do you realize how, how much heating cost is going to go up already this winter? And, it's not going to get less, and then with that tax, it's going to be there, and then we are going to be taxed to pay that in the extra fees. I think it's just another leveraging of something that isn't in the long run. It's important, I wish, I wish the effort would be on limiting emissions, or giving something to the people that are going to produce ways of making less exhaust and so forth from, from natural gas and/or fuel, fuel oil, et cetera. So, as it is, I'm going to vote against it.
Anybody else? Paul?
I, I don't think that we should be weighing in on national issues, or issues of even greater than national issues, we should be sticking to things that affect Opaque and its immediate area, because if we, if we start with this, then what other national issues are we going to be asked to, to weigh in on? And that's not even getting into, if you start adding bureaucracy to figure out tax credit, or carbon credits, and sending out checks and all that, how that can at all be more efficient for our economy, so I'm also opposed to that, to this.
Okay. Anybody else? Ready to vote? Voice vote here. All in favor?
I request a roll call vote, please.
Okay. All right. Roll call. Callan Dexter.
Nay.
Lori Chestnut.
Nay.
Paul Hagan.
No.
Alan Keeland.
Aye.
Scott Perchatsky.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Nay.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Dimitri Martin.
Aye.
Mary Fair.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
No.
You have a five-five tie? So, I will choose to vote, and I vote aye. All right. Mayor Smith votes aye, motion carries. All right, next up, we have a request to accept the EDA planning grant award. Karen, this is you.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Smith. This is on page 117 of your packet, you guys actually got most of the detail during our Personnel Committee of the whole meeting, but again, we were awarded or informed that we're going to be awarded the EDA Planning and Technical Assistance Grant. This is a grant that really was largely worked on between Andrew Dane and Greg Gromon, and again, this plan would address diversifying the city of Opaque. We mentioned a couple of weeks ago that one of the nicks we get on our credit rating is our heavily reliance on manufacturing. Obviously, manufacturing is a gigantic asset to our community, but we also have to recognize that 33% of our jobs are tied to it, and if something happened to that, you know, what happens to our city? So, what kind of efforts can we do to bring in different types of businesses in the future? It's largely upon that, also addresses being prepared for COVID resilience, pandemic resilience, and coming out of maybe the negative impacts that have happened over the last year and a half because of that. So, this is what that grant looks to really result in. Again, this grant award is $100,700. The city cash match is $300,000. Again, we are looking to fund that through some of the excess building permit revenues that we have, and again, as of a couple of weeks ago, the city's collected $285,114 And again, as of a couple of weeks ago, the city's collected $285,114 in building revenues for 2020. We budgeted $75,000. So over a $200,000 surplus there. That's where we're looking to do this. Kathy and I have talked about that. That was Kathy's suggestion. And then in addition to this plan, which we have budgeted at $72,000, as a reminder, it's also going towards the staff position, Andrew Dane's staff position, to help with some of the assistance. That's an overview of what we're looking, staff is recommending for council to formally accept the award for the $100,700 for the EDA Planning and Technical Assistance Grant Program.
All right. Any questions? Anybody like to make a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Kealan, second by Chestnut, that the council approve accepting the EDA Planning Grant Award in the amount of $100,700. Any discussion? I don't think so. Let me, let me look here. I gotta look at mine. Sorry, guys. No, it's just, just a roll call. All right. Ready to vote? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Again, say no. Motion carried. Next up, we have a request to approve the 2022 City Attorney Contract. Karen, you're up again.
Okay. Thanks again, Mayor Smith. There's a memo on page 142 of your packet talking about 2022 City Prosecution Services. Just a little background and a reminder, in September, we did send out an RFP for Prosecution Services, and that was a result of Attorney Hart, who gave us a letter of notice that he would be looking not to renew the contract for 2021, and that was given to us on July 12th. That contract is set to expire on January 15th of 2022. We went through the process, sent it out to large and small firms, a lot of local firms, and we did receive word back from two of the larger firms, more regional firms, Von Breezen and Roper and Davis and Qutho. Both of them basically were more interested in Davis and Qutho's case, only interested in the municipal council, so not necessarily prosecution services, which is what the RFP was specifically written for. So when I talked to them and I said, hey, just so you understand, I know you put some work into this, but this is what this was for, I thought that was clear enough. They said, oh, we apologize, we are no longer interested if it's just prosecution services. Von Breezen and Roper stated right in their proposal that they are, would do it, the prosecution services, but prefer to work with somebody that would be more cost-effective from a municipal standpoint, and that typically is a local person. So at that time, we did not have any interest from local people, even though it was sent out. I reached back out to a few local people, and Mr. Attorney Jalinski was one of them that did express some interest at that time, and then actually Attorney Tom Hart, I circled back with him. And once we clarified kind of that it was going to be prosecution services only and not general municipal council, he felt like that, that kind of changed circumstances for him. It felt like he had the ability to do that within his schedule. And we, you can see that the rates quoted, so we have Attorney Jalinski at $17,500 annually for all prosecution services, and then we have Attorney Hart at 175 hourly. So that's not apples to apples. So really, we looked back at past years, and Mr. Jalinski was only able to, he wasn't interested in the hourly, wanted that 17.5 as a minimum. And Attorney Hart has been averaging 13,000, or actually under 13,000 per year since that time. Another thing we talked about, actually, is potentially not having a city attorney at every city council meeting, maybe only when we think that it's absolutely needed. So that may be a change you see in the future, too. With all of that in mind and all of that explanation, we would be recommending really entering into a new contract since we have formally accepted the, I don't want to call it a resignation, but the non-renewal with Hart Law Office for Municipal Prosecutor Services for 2022 for the 175 hourly rate, which is unchanged from 2021.
All right. You heard Aaron's recommendation. We've discussed this at the mayor's level. Anybody have any questions or comments?
Can I make a comment?
Yeah.
Just, just so that it's clear then, is that my role then would be purely prosecuting citations on behalf of the city and not being here at meetings and providing other general counsel to staff.
Right, that's correct.
Right. And we do, we do have an agreement with
Von Breezen and Roper. Typically, you've seen maybe Steve Sorenson's, Attorney Steve Sorenson's advice, but also there's labor attorneys, Jim Macy, there's different specialties there as well. Kathy, it looks like you may want to say something.
We've also used Ellen Markwitz for development and William Fisher for litigation. So we've, we've used several different attorneys at that law firm on an hourly basis.
Okay. Yeah, go ahead.
Would those other attorneys also be on a retainer, or just we pay when they give us service?
Only when they give us service.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So anybody want to make a motion?
Move to approve the recommendation.
Second.
Motion by Olson, second by Fair, that we approve the agreement with Attorney Tom Hart for 2022 at a cost of $175 for services that was explained by Aaron. Any discussion? Aaron will call the roll.
Callan Dextra.
Aye.
Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Alan Keeland.
Aye.
Scott Porczatsky.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Dimitri Martin.
Aye.
Mary Fair.
Aye.
And Eric Olson.
Aye.
Ten ayes, no nays. Motion carried.
Speaking of our city attorney, I have to go back to my D. And when we requested the acceptance of the EDA Planning Grant, since it is a contract, we actually had to have a roll call vote on that. So can we go back? Can we, who was the motion in the second on the EDA? Do you have that still?
Oh, we didn't. Okay. I don't.
You remember who made the motion in the second on prior? You guys aren't all over 65.
I think it was Mary and I.
Okay. So it was, yeah, that's right. It was Mary made the motion, Alan made the second to approve that. So we're going to go back, if you don't mind. If we have any discussion on that, it's well past that, I'm sorry. But let's make sure we do it officially here. So we'll have Aaron call the roll on the acceptance of the EDA Plant, Planning Grant Award, which was an amount of $100,700.
I was so close to doing this clerk thing, getting through the meeting.
Well, it wasn't your fault, it was my fault.
Callan Dextra.
Aye.
Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Alan Keeland.
Aye.
Scott Porczatsky.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Dimitri Martin.
Aye.
Mary Fair.
Aye.
And Eric Olson.
Aye.
Ten ayes, zero nays. Motion carried.
All right. Then Letter F, under New Business, we have a request to amend the location of the donor recognition art piece. And I know that, I got Aaron's name on here, but I also know that Terry's here. So I don't know which one of you guys wants to, Terry, you want to take it?
Sure, I'll give Aaron a break. So we had been here earlier and requested that this donor art piece be put on City Square, and you agreed to put it up kind of in the front, this side of City Hall, right up front by the windows. After Claudia started building the pieces, and there were pictures in your packet, you can see they're absolutely beautiful. They're three-sided, and each side is different. And so our worry is that if it's up against the building, people aren't going to be able to see all sides of those beautiful art pieces. And so I came back to Aaron and Justin and asked if there was a different place on City Square that maybe we could put this art installation. And they have suggested the corner of Union and Main Street, just inside the sidewalk. And so I'm, which is on your screen, the little orange dot. So I'm here to request that you would approve that location for the installation of this piece.
Okay. Any questions or comments?
Is that, sorry, I raised my hand. Is that near where the tree was planned from our visitors with Japan?
It is.
It is? Okay.
Yep. Right in that same corner.
Okay.
The tree is in a little bit more than
I was gonna say, it wasn't going to be ripped out, was it?
No, 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 it's still there.
No, the tree will stay.
Plenty of room around it to
There's plenty of room between the tree and the sidewalk.
But it is in the same corner. You're right. Any other questions or comments? Anybody like to make a motion to approve this?
So move.
Peterson, who seconded it? I'm sorry. Chestnut, that we approve the request to change the location of the donor recognition art pieces to the City Hall front lawn. All right. Any discussion on that? We're going to do a voice vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Again, say no. Motion carried.
Thank you so very, very much.
Yeah, thanks for waiting us out here, Terry. Okay. This is the addendum that came out, or this is the discussion on the addendum. This is for the council to approve Foundations for Living Operations for November 1st through November 4th. Now, that's not a misprint here. You'll understand once Aaron explains this per conditions of the 2019, 2020 special use permit.
Thank you, Mayor Smith. As you mentioned, a resolution is in your packet on page 151. So you guys have seen the process and the applications come forward for the rezone to the Homeless Shelter Overlay District, and that negates the need for a special use permit in the future every couple of years. That rezone was contingent upon them meeting all of the site plan approvals and standards, which that is actually going to get seen at Plan Commission, at the regular Plan Commission meeting on November, whatever that one stays, 4th. So there's a technicality here. Technically, they cannot legally operate unless council gives them permission to do so. So what I'm asking here is that a resolution gets adopted by council that would allow them to operate as they have for those three days, so they don't have to wait to, later in that week, to open. And then at that point, all of the, or all of the approvals will be contingent upon Plan Commission's review, site plan, which we have worked with them. We expect that to go through. We don't see a reason that it would not.
And site plan reviews do not come back to City Council. Those are approved at the Planning Commission.
Correct.
So that's why the November 4th date, November 4th date is listed on there. Anybody have any discussion, comments on that? Yeah, go ahead.
I feel like I should get the volume discount today. I'm sorry. Do we, as a council, have the ability to, through resolution, allow them to, to go against the established process or to be an exception to this established process?
We do. I, I checked. We just mentioned Attorney Sorenson, and I did run this by him, and he is actually one that helped draft this.
Okay.
So this is very similar to the agreement that we had with them on either a yearly basis, or I think we had some three years in there, too. And so this is very similar, but it's only four days instead of a year.
Thank you.
Okay. Eric, go ahead.
Probably doesn't matter, but our next meeting is actually the third, isn't it?
Is that the Wednesday?
Well, if it is, then you guys are allowing them to operate one day longer for this resolution.
Well, it will take a business day for us to sign it. I guess it does make sense that it would be the fourth, I guess. Thanks, though, Eric.
Thank you, Eric.
I just have one then after this, when they go into the homeless shelter. I'm so confused because they're a warming shelter. Are they going to be a homeless shelter then? Or are they going to maintain the warming shelter?
Maintain the warming shelter just as you have grown accustomed to it. So they have no plans to change operations.
Change that, or next door, maybe?
Yeah, yeah, nothing to do with any other property.
Okay.
The next door has nothing to do with Foundations for Living.
Yeah, okay.
Somebody else.
Yeah, I know.
Okay, all right. Okay. Anybody else? Somebody want to make a motion?
I'll move to approve the resolution.
Motion by Kealan, second by Martin, that we approve of the Foundations for Living operation from November 1st through November 4th resolution. Any further discussion? Aaron will call the roll.
Callan Dextra.
Aye.
Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Alan Keeland.
Aye.
Scott Porczatsky.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Dimitri Martin.
Aye.
Mary Fair.
Aye.
And Eric Olson.
Aye.
Ten ayes, zero nays. Motion carried.
All right. Do you have License Report 1554? It's an operator's license. It's on page 152 of your packet. We're looking for a motion to approve.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Chestnut, second by Martin, that we approve License Report 1554. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried. License Report 1555, this is a taxicab driver's license. That's on page 153, the last page of your packet there. There's one individual on there. We need a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Olson, second by Peterson, that we approve License Report 1555. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried. Communications and recommendations of the mayor, I really only have one, and that's to remember that we're not done. When we get done with our council meeting tonight, we do have a committee, the whole meeting, and we're all, we're all, every one of us is going to see the preliminary budget for 2022. So we'll take a good look at it. All right. Anybody else have anything for the good of the meeting tonight? Looking for a motion to adjourn? Hagan?
Second.
Kealan?
So we need a motion to approve the agenda.
Again, motion by Hagan, second by Chestnut, that we approve the agenda. There was a handout, though, that that's part of your motion, Paul.
Yes.
It is.
Okay. The, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Again, say no. Motion carried. You're up, Kath.
We're here in October discussing the budget, and I just want to qualify the numbers in here. Our still fluid. We do not have all of the numbers from the state of Wisconsin. We probably will have them later this month and maybe sometime in November. Tax bills don't go out until the third Monday in December, so we have plenty of time for everybody to get numbers to us. But planning as it is, we're going through the budget, very high level. You have summaries of the funds that are budgeted by the city. And just here's some of the highlights. There is no increase in the group health insurance rates. We are on year number four with 0% increase. We are on year number four with 0% increase. So we have very healthy employees. There is a decrease with Wisconsin retirement contribution rates, slight, maybe quarter of a percent, but it does add up to several thousand dollars across the city. We are budgeting in the salary accounts, 2% cost of living increase to city employees, and reserving a 1% incentive bonus, which would be budgeted in contingency upon when we decide to do the program and use the contingency money for that. So that will take a three-quarters of a vote from the council to move that money. Adjustments in staff that were presented at the Committee of the Whole on Personnel have been included in this budget. Increases in the tax levy in accordance with levy limits is $41,767. That is almost a 2% increase in our levy. We did also receive, because of the amount of roads that we are doing, an increase in our general transportation aids. So the years that we did no roads have dropped off the formula. So we received an additional $55,368 next year for transportation aids. And then we increased, because of the increase in the building permit fees that we have been seeing, we did increase the building permit fees by $55,000. And that's the only adjustments I've really done in this budget. All of the departments have given adjustments, but most of them have left what we have as an operating budget. And there's just very minimal increases or decreases to the general fund and the other funds. So I provided summaries of the hotel motel tax fund, showing how much is collected by the room taxes. This does include the new percentage that the tax, new tax district, or tourism district that was created from the dot-coms and the towns in there. So there is going to be transfers out to the towns that are participating. So we're looking at probably, again, about $285,000 in room taxes collected. The next page is the airport fund. Again, there's a slight increase to cover the administrative costs. Otherwise, we're looking at the fuel sales and hangar rental to cover the rest of the operations within that fund. I know that there's still discussion with the airport board on the snow removal and with the manager's resignation next year. So this is our best guess estimate for next year. It'll be fluid, depending on what happens with the airport next year.
It's entirely possible that our snow removal budget will go up a significant amount, because the current manager was doing things.
Right.
So just...
So, like I said, this is, we're looking at what we can forecast for right now. The transit fund, we are looking at having their increase with the rate, but also looking at an increase in the intergovernmental revenues from the state and federal government to cover this. So the tax levy in the transit fund is going to be staying flat at $10,000. This fund is in, is pretty much just getting what it needs to cover its expenses and still provide the service. The library fund peg is going to the Finance Committee with this budget tomorrow. So this has been the recommendation right now for the library fund. And then we have the Adult Recreation Fund. Again, based on staff's recommendations, we're seeing a change in this budget a bit with the expenses, and so we're going to just leave it the way it is. The Debt Service Fund is the fund I really wanna focus on, because the levy gets pretty much adjusted by the Debt Service Fund. Right now, we don't have any money or funds budgeted to cover if we would go to the market later this fall for an issue. We are anticipating instead, right after the first of the year, to do a note, anticipation note, depending on the market and see. But we're looking at a $1.5 million, 10-year note to cover just the projects, road projects, the equipment costs. So it's short-term for that. But the $6.5 million for the public works garage is going to be a separate bond, and it will be 20 years. Because it is a building, it's kinda like a mortgage, you're gonna wanna pay for that over a longer period of time. So that's what's kind of in the Debt Service Fund. The other thing I wanted to point out is in 2022, we are anticipating closing the TIF 3, 6, and 9. TIF 3 and 6 both had approximately $1.5 million of tax levy used to pay their debt service before an increment was generated enough. But there is enough increment now in closing these TIF districts to pay back the Debt Service Fund. So I'm looking at recommending that we hold that money in this Debt Service Fund, once it gets pegged back from the TIFs, and look at paying off in 2023, or even 2022, depending on the market, the 2018 debt issuance. And so we would only have the 2020 and the 2019, and maybe the 22 bonds that are out there as outstanding bonds for general obligation. So it's very aggressive. We have, because of our refinancing, this last time, we did get a premium on our bonds. So I am using that premium to lower the tax levy for debt service next year. And in doing so, you'll see at the last page, that's how I'm planning to make sure that the residents have a tax levy that they can afford. The TIF districts, again, you've seen this numerous times during the year. Again, it's another picture showing you that we'll have debt service paid off, and as we slowly get away, that if we go to 2032, not only will the two utilities be paid back, but the Debt Service Fund will also be paid back for TIF aid debt. So if that's the way the council wants to go, that's where I'm projecting. I did put in the Wapaka Online Utility, only because Josh had everything done, and I still hadn't looked at the water and sewer utilities. But this is just a summary of the online utility. It does have increase due to the expansion of the utility with the towers that the county's putting up, and just getting more access to people that need broadband in the area. So that's the summary of the Wapaka Utility Online. The general fund summary, I do not have in here...
Kathy, can I?
Sure.
Just go back, just real quick, will you, just for a second, on the pack online?
Okay.
I wanna make sure I understand. So when you say beginning retained earnings, is that supposed to be beginning cash on hand?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Just wanted to, so that's, so that bottom number at the end of, in the blue, the 2021, that will be the amount of cash that's...
That we're estimating at the end of 2021.
Okay.
Yes. They do, they, all of their assets, except for the truck that they got from the sewer utility, all of their assets have been depreciated. So...
Okay.
I'm sorry, that's a little counties between accountants.
Yeah, sorry about that.
But yeah, that's the difference. The general fund, again, it looks pretty much the same as last year. The only difference is, is that we haven't, we don't have a number for contingency. That's the number that I use to bring us in compliance with the expenditure restraint program, which is going to be just over 3%, that we can increase our operating budget, and we just use that so that we do not lose the $175,000 that we get in expenditure restraint money. And this has to do with taking several different portions of the operating budget and putting them into special revenue funds. So we've continued to move contingency up, but that's the general fund. And if you look at 18 and 19 and 20, where they ended, you'll see that our 22 budget isn't much different than what we're looking at for operations for the general fund. Again, that's including some of the adjustments that we had in personnel, and the 2% across the board, and changes with employees for benefits. And I'm sure everybody wants to see the next page, which is the levy by fund. We're looking at 1.7 million for the general fund, 346,000 for the library, 10,000 for the transit, 85,000 for the airport. Right now, there's 102, 323 for the youth program. That number may change. We did have some money left over in the youth program fund from 2020, not operating. So there may be some changes in that amount. If there would be, then that money would go to, back into the general fund. And then the debt service levy is going down by $59,000, by using the premium that we had on our last bond issue. So our levy is taking a little bit of a dip. And the last page is the tax rate calculation. Now, I'm going to qualify these numbers, because these are based on last year's assessed value. I do not have yet the assessed value for 2021's tax bills. So this mill rate that's here is only an estimate. It's not actual. It could go up, it could go down. We are looking at approximately $9 million in equalized value. That's the value that the state says that our properties are worth. And that mill, that equalized mill rate is going down by about 45 cents. Last year, it was 23.62 per thousand. This year, the equalized rate is 23.27, and that's if Wapaka County and the school district and the Fox Valley all stay the same. So these are all just estimated numbers for you to look at. But the biggest number is, is that we had $97,000 more of value in the TIF district. So our increment went up $97,000, which gets spread across all of the districts. And just based on this number, your $100,000 home would go up $79 for the year. But like I said, this is all preliminary. I will be posting on the website the detailed line item budgets. Anybody wants to look at, ask questions, ask the departments, you know, if you have anything that you want explained. Again, this is very preliminary, but it's very, it's a doable budget. I don't have any doom and gloom this time.
So, you got any questions? Yeah, Alan, go ahead.
The 2% pay raise, you know, social security is going up, veterans' pensions are going up like 5.9%, and I'm just wondering if we should be considering something more than 2%?
If you want to use fund balance, the biggest problem I have when we do that is that we would have to continue that kind of growth to cover that expense. Because if I'm taking, like I said, I only, we only got, our levy increase, according to the state, could only go up $41,000. That just, just about pays the 2% in the general fund. So either you gotta cut something to pay a higher rate of pay, or you have to do it one time. It can't be something that it grows. Now, the other thing we could look at would be is, what would be the impact with TIF 3 and 6 closing? That I have to still kinda work out. And maybe we could do the one-time increase in salaries, and take it from fund balance, but know that it might be harder to not have a tax increase next year. Okay? That's what I'm trying to do. I'm trying to make sure that we can afford it and not impact us future-wise. So if I gave a 3, or a 4, or even a 5% increase, that would be great. I'd take it out of fund balance, but I also, next year, not be able to come up with enough money, we'd have to cut something? You know? And we have been, we have been adding to fund balance, which is good for one-time expenditures. If you wanted to do something with that for one type of project, you know, then that's something that we could, we could use that money for. But to go for ongoing expenses, it's not, for me, it's not recommended, only because you're not getting that same kind of turnaround with growth in your net new construction to be able to absorb that increase going forward. And then, all of a sudden, you tell the employees, well, you got 5% this year, but you're not gonna get anything next year, because we can't afford it. Unless you wanna raise taxes. And we always are trying to lower the tax rate. We wanna make sure that we look affordable for the city's portion, and I can see that in a couple of years, you will look good, but we aren't there yet with the TIF districts closing.
The county's getting 2. The county's giving 2%.
Yeah. I don't know, you're not really comparing apples to apples. They're all...
No, but it's kinda like...
It's a coal issue.
Yeah.
It's, it's, yeah.
But if you look at, you know, with social security or the vets or everybody's getting it 5.9, how many years had that been?
Right.
How many years, you know, that they hadn't looked at that and brought that up? So we're looking year to year and we're starting to do what you want to do, keep everything in range, not to pay Paul this year and then next year not be able to pay anything.
Paul? You had mentioned for the debt service fund a note anticipation note and then also another note for construction of the public works. I didn't catch exactly what the note anticipation note was for.
The note anticipation note, we would go to the market only because it's lucrative at the time. And so I'm going to borrow, I'm going to go now because I need the money. Let's say Justin has a contract that I need to have the money now to do something. I'll do a note anticipation note and then I'll go and hold it until the interest rates go down a little more and then go out and borrow.
But is that, what is that funding?
The funding, usually the note anticipation note is going to be like the 100, 1.5 million road projects that we need to pay right away. I don't, I don't anticipate us needing the note anticipation note for the six and a half million.
How much is, how much are you looking to borrow with a note? I thought you said 10 million.
If you did all of the projects at one time, which would be 22s, 23s, and the six and a half million is 10 million. We did that, we, that was our first brush that we were going, during the capital improvement committee of the whole, is that we were looking at that, that, what would be that borrow? And we went back and with the mayor's recommendation is that we would do a separate bond for the public works garage longer than putting everything all together in a $10 million bond. Although a $10 million bond might be more.
Marketable.
Well, marketable, yeah, because, you know, you'll have more people looking at a $10 million bond. But then again, I'm also looking at a six and a half million 20-year bond. That might be a little bit better.
Can you stagger the maturities?
Yes.
Okay, so you could do both.
Yep.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Alright, so Kathy, thank you for putting this together. I want to take the, as you should too probably, but I want to take the the next couple of weeks to take a good look at, at the budget that's in front of you. There'll be some recommendations. As Kathy has already alluded to, I've already made some recommendations towards, towards the budget, but there'll be some other recommendations that you'll see when, when you, when we bring this back. And the concept is, is that you will see that not at the first meeting in November, but the second meeting in November. And then we will, at the very latest, will need approval at that meeting?
Yep.
Okay. I mean, we have to make sure that we have something in place so that we can get the, get it over to the county by December 1st, isn't it?
The first week in December is when Mark usually wants them.
Yeah. So I mean, if you don't feel comfortable with doing it in that meeting, we could obviously call a special meeting that would just be to deal with the budget. There also will be a public hearing before the November, what is it, 19th meeting? November 16th. So there will be a public hearing before that meeting on the budget. Again, if you have recommendations, I heard a few of them tonight. Don't be afraid to pass them on. If you do pass them on and you're going to send them to Kathy to copy me on them too, because ultimately, it's going to be a budget that I present to the council. So I'll need to see that information. Okay? Anything else for the good of the committee of the whole meeting? We need a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Oh, you guys, I'm not looking that way anymore. Motion by Kealan, second by Hagan to adjourn. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Against, motion carried, returned at 8:47 PM. Have a great night, everybody.